I'd like to call the East Line Board of Selectmen regular meeting of October 16, 2024. 7:00 PM. We're in the East Line Town Hall Upper Meeting Room. Can we all stand for the Fudge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Are there any additional agenda and consent calendar items? I don't think we have any. Is there anybody who would like to speak? A public delegation? Okay. We don't have anybody. Next is the approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the hearing minutes of October 2nd, 2024, as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any changes? No? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I hear a motion for the regular meeting of October 2nd, 2024?
Move to approve a regular meeting of the minutes of October 2nd, 2024, as submitted.
Second?
Second.
Thanks, Roseanne. Are there any changes, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent calendar. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar for October 16th, 2024, in the amount of $4,569.87.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Section 2, New Business Discussion and Possible Action Historic Documents Preservation Grant. I think we have Ms. Galbo here to review that with us. Thank you.
Sure. So this is a yearly grant. State Library puts it out to all town clerks for us to apply. Nothing really changes every year except for the amount. Application's usually the same. We just come up with projects that we would like to do. This project includes preserving, microfilming, printing on archival paper, some board of finance minutes prior to 2009, planning minutes prior to 2011, and zoning prior to '94. The reason we chose those years is because the other years have been digitized back to there. And also, two of our vital books, that's Births, Marriage, Deaths, 2022 and 2023. The rest have all been done. And that's really what the project is. You do have my supporting documentation. The contract's in there and the quote from, or the estimate from Atkins. Atkins is doing the work, so.
Now, does Atkins actually do the work?
Yeah.
Of conversing writing?
Oh, yeah.
As opposed to office staff?
No, no. Atkins does the work. Their quote is in there. Yep.
Well, I didn't know if there was anything extra that required extra hours on the part of town employees.
No. Nope. They don't do anything. They come, they get the stuff. There's a whole chain of custody form that we use when they take it. And then they bring it back. And they're very efficient. They usually have the stuff back to us in a day or two. Very quick.
Is that fast?
Oh, yes.
Oh, wow.
Very quick. They don't want to hang on to our stuff. They want to get it back to us as soon as possible.
So are we still storing documents at Iron Mountain?
Oh, yeah. Yep. We don't particularly, but our land record company does. Yes.
What is Iron Mountain?
It's a document storage place. Actually, there's more than one. There is a main one, but they're like all over the country. Yeah. So that's where microfilm is stored. Yep.
And so are these documents that are being filmed now, once they are, once they're transcribed, will they go there to be stored?
The microfilm will be, but not the documents themselves. No.
And the documents itself will be kept here at Town Hall?
Yeah. Uh-huh. And we'll have digital copies of them also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have any questions?
No.
Thanks, Karen. You're very welcome.
Thanks, Karen.
Move the following. Resolved to appropriate a sum of $5,500 received from a grant from the State of Connecticut Library for preservation of historic documents in the town clerk's office, including reformatting and microfilming projects for public records. Note, this action does not require board of finance nor town meeting approvals.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thanks, Roseanne. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next is the, to appoint an ad hoc committee member to the Capital Improvement Program Committee.
I move to appoint Ann Schikello as an ad hoc committee member on the Capital Improvement Program Committee.
Second?
Thanks, Roseanne. Is there any discussion?
Thank you for volunteering.
You're welcome. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain since I'm the one who was appointed. So it'd be 5-0-1. Okay. Do I hear any other motions?
Sure. I'd like to move to appoint Don McKenzie as an ad hoc committee member on the Capital Improvement Program Committee.
Thanks, Candace. Any discussion? Comments? Thanks, Don, for volunteering. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Abstaining.
Okay, so that's 5-0-1 with Don abstaining.
Is it 5-0 or 4-0?
4-0. Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm thinking Dan's here. Okay. Next is appointments to boards and commissions. Under C is on the Commission on Aging. And it looks like in our packet we had received a resume or letter from a Carol Coyle.
I move to appoint Carol Coyle, 22 Seabreeze Avenue, Niantic, as a member on the Commission on Aging for the town of East Line with a term to expire January 5th, 2026.
One second. I'll comment and say that I know Carol Coyle. She's been very active within the regular dealings with the commission and volunteers at the senior center quite frequently. And she is well-known to that community. So I think I'm glad to see that she applied for the position.
Seems like a good candidate. Anybody else want to say anything? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's see. Next is the appointment for a town building committee. I don't think we received anything in our packet. So I guess we'll just put that on, also table it and put it on for the next agenda. Okay. Old Business?
And that is caused by the resignation of Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. O'Connor. And then Mr. Abe Fisher passed away. He was also on it.
So I would like to comment on both of those individuals. Both have been active for many years in different aspects of the community. I think that Mr. O'Connor has served on the committee for the renovations to the high school, for renovations to Willie Behans, and a longtime public servant for the community, along with Mr. Fisher, who also for many years very active on several commissions. So it's, well, I think with regret that we note their passing.
Only Mr. Fisher.
Mr. Fisher, yes.
I missed something else. It's at 7:00.
Thank you, Roseanne. Number three is Old Business Discussion and Possible Action for EV charging rates. And I think we have Alex Close here tonight to discuss it with us.
Hi, Alex. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, I just don't anticipate action, but just kind of further discussion from a couple weeks ago. And then maybe depending on how you're all feeling, if you want to draft a motion for next meeting. Like I said, we still have time, but I don't know if you've given any more thought to kind of the structuring of the rates, if you want to have any kind of discounts. And then I presented some charging that I saw in similar towns along the shoreline. To us, kind of ranges, I think Branford was really low. It's kind of an outlier, but ranges between like 20 and 35 cents. It's kind of the going rate for the Level 2 chargers. No other municipality that I found in this area has a, will have a Level 3 fast charger like we would. So that's a little bit apples and oranges, just due to the speed of the charging and the infrastructure. People, you know, would treat that differently as a Level 2. So the rates that you see would be comparable to the chargers that we would have on Hope Street or Methodist Street, which are the Level 2 slower chargers. But yeah, I'm really just here to answer any questions that you may have the best I can.
Could you speak to the idle fee?
So sure. I would recommend an idle fee. And all that would do is it's an incentive for people to move their vehicles once their charge has been complete. Therefore, they're not taking up that spot. You know, it's all public parking. These are going in public parking places that currently aren't metered or anything like that. But obviously, there is a value to that, you know, piece of infrastructure that people are going to want to use. So an idle fee would just kind of encourage people to move it. And it's pretty common for facilities to have some sort of an idle fee in place. I would recommend some sort of a grace time because if people are downtown or something like that, then they have time to get the notification on their phone or what have you that they're charged and go and move the vehicle. And, you know, I don't think, you know, it's not a major burden fee or anything, but just an incentive to not stay parked there once your vehicle's fully charged.
How's that monitored? Are you still plugged in after it's fully charged?
It'll start to charge you, correct.
Thank you.
And that's something that would just get programmed. You know, the company that was servicing the software, we could just tell them exactly what we want them to do, what the timeframe looks like, and what the fee would be. And they would just program that in. And that could be, you know, that would be advertised on there. That's the idle fee. That's very common for chargers to have that.
Okay. So going forward, we would need to consider the fees for out-of-town people, in-town people, idle fees. So there seems like there's kind of a complex tiered system.
Sure. If you want to provide any kind of incentive or discount versus just having a flat, you know, this is what it is, you just have to figure out what that is going to look like and what the fee might be. If you want to, you know, have an idle fee, what that would look like, what the grace period would look like. And I think the only other thing would be we're not, we're not at a point where we have any town fleet vehicles that charge. So it's not really something that needs to be officially drafted or motioned, but just something to be thinking about in terms of where those funds would come from if that, you know, EV count would be reimbursed or something like that. But I want to be clear that it's not, it's not on our agenda. We're not looking at, you know, any electric fleet vehicles or anything like that, as far as I'm aware. So that's not really something that has to be part of. You know, that's something that can be determined in a later date, but I'm just kind of getting the gears turning for everybody to be thinking about what that structure looks like. I would, I would say the focus would be when the chargers go live, what is the fee going to be for the public? Do you want to offer any kind of incentives or discounts on that? And do you want to set an idle fee? And what is that? Those are really the big three things that need to be decided before we can actually begin to run the equipment and have it as a service. The last thing that I want to say is I would also recommend whatever that fee comes out to be. This language can easily be drafted in the motion that you just round either up or down, or just round to like the nearest whole cent to make it easy for people. They'll know, you know, say it's 30 cents a kilowatt hour because the electric, the electric rate that you're getting can sometimes be like point cents, like tenths or hundredths of a cent. So that could all be, you know, settled in the language of the motion. But again, the idea would be you set a scheme that, you know, we're going to get a bill monthly for these meters from Eversource. And that gives the ability to just review that bill and say, did our supplier delivery change for any reason? And can we reflect the fees without having to come back to the board to change those? So we're not coming back every single time, right? That there's a structure in place to kind of check and balance within the parameters that are set for paying the bills. Whereas then, you know, once we actually get this thing up and running for a few months, we can kind of check in on it and say, hey, how are we looking? And does it make sense to come back to the board, give a report? And you can always make a decision to change something about the structure, if that makes sense.
It does make sense.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm just thinking of this in terms of, from a teacher's standpoint, if you have five people who don't drive electric vehicles who are going to be making decisions. If you like to frame the conversation going forward, in my mind, I see some kind of diagram with the possible funding schemes and the possible amounts. Seeing an X and Y axis in my head, I don't know why.
Sure.
But maybe something like that would be helpful for us to hang our hats on in terms of decision-making. And perhaps, I don't know if it would be off-base if I were to say, maybe you and I could communicate about that and then bring something to the group next time as a proposal or a series of proposals.
Sure. I think my, the only reservation is that it's going to be hard to predict, you know, what the usage is actually going to be. I think it's going to be, it'll be challenging to predict that, but we can certainly take a look at it. Because it will, like you're saying, vary depend on how many vehicles you get charging and how much they're actually using is going to then determine what that kind of fee buffer is. So we could definitely look at, okay, well, if we use X kilowatts a month, what would that fee look like in terms of net gain versus, you know, a different amount? But.
So would it be advisable, and I don't, in the workshop right now, would it be advisable to just have something in place that we can then amend because of that kind of impossibility to predict?
Right. So that, that's, that's where I would recommend it being a language that it's on top of whatever the supply and delivery is. Because then you can monitor that amount. We can see what we're actually earning. And the good thing is that most of the fees have already been paid for, for at least a few years. So there's a healthy, you know, there's no risk of not making enough money to pay for the software fees, the company fees or anything like that. The chargers are warranted for a certain amount of time. So you have, fortunately, that buffer of time. The greatest risk that you would have is that Eversource will charge a monthly fee for their, to deliver us electricity, whether people use the chargers or not. I think the most recent fee was the $44 a month. So that's kind of the greatest risk is you install the chargers and nobody uses them. And then there's an Eversource fee just simply because we have a meter there that they're servicing, right? But all of the other fees associated with this equipment have already been, all the other fees associated with the actual equipment itself, not the Eversource fees, have already been covered for, you know, several years. That's kind of where you have the, we can, you can accept a little bit of risk there in terms of, okay, we'll set something, frame it in a way that you can monitor it and then come back and decide, is this working? Or should we adjust, you know, should you adjust what the outcome is? But I think you're not really going to see it until you install it and set something and give it a couple months to collect some data.
I know I would like to see some sort of discount for in-town residents or community members. So I'm not too sure how to actually navigate that, but I think that that would be a good thing to do.
I guess my question regarding that, though, is if we do that for in-town residents, then the other residents are subsidizing those residents who have electric vehicles. You know, that, I guess that's my concern. I don't want the people who don't have them to be like, hey, you know, we're not getting a discount and they're getting a discount. I guess that would be my, my only concern with that. But we can talk about that some more. I do like the idea, though, of saying X on top of the supply and delivery because that way it could change based upon what the supply and delivery is and that you're not coming back here every month.
Right.
And if you set, like, you know, whatever, maybe it's, say, 30 cents or, so you have a little cushion and get some data, and then you can always come back to us and say, okay, this is where we stand on this. You know, what do you guys want to do?
Right. And the supply, we would know because the supply is contracted unless we found a lower rate. The only time we would voluntarily change the supply out of contract would be if we found a cheaper rate to walk into. Which, again, you could, we would know what that cheaper rate is, then could drop the overall cost because it's, you know, that's that fixed fee on top of the service. It's really the delivery that Eversource can change, that can be changed more frequently. And we don't really have a way to predict what that is. So that's really where that flexibility comes in to say, okay, well, our delivery just went up 5 cents. Our overall cost has to go, our delivery went up 3 cents. Our overall cost of what we're charging for has to go 3 cents as well. You know, just because that's the nature of that delivery fee, that delivery charge. There's no way to, I'd love to be able to say it's going to be this for a year and be really predictable, but it's just not. So that does, definitely gives some autonomy and makes it a little bit easier for the staff and the board. You know, we're not, you know, like you said, we're not here every month. That doesn't make sense.
How does one pay for this service? A credit card or?
Usually through an app and linked with a, so there'll be two main providers that will have apps that you can register and account for. One will be AmpUp and one will be Loop. We tried to get them all in one service instead, but it didn't work out that way with the manufacturers, but that's okay. Most people who have electric vehicles, or everyone's going to be familiar with this process looks like because it's how all the chargers operate, if there's an app of some sort. Or whoever your manufacturer is will have, built into the manufacturer, will have like an account that you can set up that has an agreement with multiple vendors. So you, as the driver, are just paying through your, your actual like cars, whoever manufactured your car. But basically, it's all done electronically and it's all done through some sort of an application. It's not that you take a credit card to the machine here at the site.
And then also the idea of the idling charge. Certainly, we all know that during the summer, parking is at a premium.
Right.
And one of the things that we were considering in discussing this was that this would encourage people to go into the shops and things while they were waiting for the vehicle to charge.
Right.
So what, what are other towns charging in terms of an idling fee or penalty?
Yeah, it's varying quite a bit. I think New London had, I think, if I believe, remember clearly, New London had like a certain amount of grace period, I don't know if it was like an hour or two, and then they charged like a flat fat, a flat fee of like $10 or something like that. But I'd have to, I can find out the specifics, but normally, it's a certain, it's a certain amount of cents per minute or fractions of a cent per minute or something like that. And usually, it's like a metered system. I've only seen once or twice that it's like, okay, after an hour, we're going to charge you 20 bucks or something like that. Usually, it's, as your car continues to sit there, it's charging some amount. But I can look more into what those fees are. They're usually very low. In just my opinion, it seems like if parking is at a premium where you are at, you may want to charge a little bit of a higher fee just to make an encouragement for people to move their vehicle, but without being, you know, true, things come up, you're in the middle of something, you're in a movie or something like that. You don't want it to become like now it's an economic burden that people are afraid of, you know? But it's enough to say, oh, I have to go move my vehicle. I mean, I, I can't say that like people are going to be super trying, you know, being really lucrative about trying to keep my car parked here for no reason. I think people, there's like a common etiquette to just say, oh, my vehicle's done charging, I'm going to go move it anyway. But the fee just kind of helps with that.
Thank you.
I, I would, I think common etiquette is a word that's not used enough today, but however, and I think if this is $10 fee, the guy would just leave his car there for the parking spot. When parking charges $25, $30 in certain places. I think if you could install an escalating fee, that you're good for 30 minutes. Okay, whatever it is. And then from there, now the rate will, and be notified that the rate is not going to go to this. That, that provides a little, a probe, like, hey, let's go move it. Is somebody waiting to get to a doctor's appointment because they got to charge their car?
Sure.
I think that would be good. You might not like this, but I think a flat fee for everybody at the same rate, if you post it like a gas station, are they posted? Is there a light saying what it is or not?
So most people will see the, you, you can set up a display. I'd have to find out if our chargers are inherently going to have a display or not. Most people are going to check what the rate is through an app. They'll, or like, or through their vehicle. They'll know what the rate is ahead of time. Or they'll show up and they'll say, what's the rate? And they'll check their phone and it'll tell them.
But I'm saying operate it like you would a gas station. The rates are outside. I mean, you know the rates?
The rates will be published for sure, whether they're on a sign or not, or on, or on an app. More likely, it will be on an app. You, you will know ahead of time what the rate is.
And you bought the car, you know you're going to have to pay for electricity. So, and if, regarding town vehicles, I think they should be charged. We probably have to install another couple chargers if, when we get to that level at, at a town facility. So they're not even using the retail.
That's cer, yeah, that's certainly an option. I don't want to like go too far down that track. It's just something for the board to be thinking about in terms of how everything is going to be structured.
But if there's two, two town vehicles parked there, when the guys come to the charge, that would really upset people.
Right.
All right.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
So, excuse me. Do you see a scenario where like the Level 3, which is the faster chargers, would be used a lot more than the Level 2? And would that like impact?
Sure.
Like the, like supply and delivery costs? Do you know what I mean? Like, would we be losing money on the other two Level, Level 2, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Well, it's all, it's all one account.
Okay.
That would pay for the separate, three separate meters. We would just set up one special revenue account that would collect and would pay the bills for all of them. So if anything, that would be a benefit if you're making more off of one and it can cover the other, you know, if that turns out to be. Again, everything is very difficult to predict. This is kind of uncharted waters. In particular, a municipality operating a fast charger is a little bit more uncharted as well. But I would say, and this is like purely my, you know, understanding logically in terms of if a charge, if that, if the chargers at Town Hall can charge your vehicle in a half an hour to an hour, you're going to be more willing to come from a further distance. There's a good chance you're going to get people here that are actually passing through on, say, 95 to come and charge because, you know, the next closest one, there may be some, they're popping up every day. It seems like new ones, but the next closest one for a long time was Waterford by the Best Buy there that could charge at that same rate. So to answer your question, I would predict that we would see a lot more use of the fast chargers in Town Hall, partially because the cars can churn through a lot faster. You may only need to be on the charger for 15 minutes. That may be a situation where it's more of, you know, I'm going to park here, I'm going to charge, and I'm just going to stay in my vehicle, and then I'm going to move to go on my way, or I'm going to move to go downtown or something like that. Versus if you have to charge your car for several hours, maybe you'll sit in your car for several hours, or maybe you're using it as a convenience because you're already planning to go shopping or something like that. or maybe you're using it as a convenience because you're already planning to go shopping or something like that. Um, so I think you will see more vehicles at the town hall fast charger because of the speed it can charge vehicles and I think people would be willing to travel further to utilize those, those, that infrastructure.
One other question, just because I've never used an electric vehicle. When you charge it, do you have to turn your vehicle off? Like when you, when you pump gas, you turn your vehicle off? Is it like that with a charger also?
Um, I can't speak for every vehicle, but for a lot of them, uh, no, but it's, it's totally because you're not, um, the on and off in electric vehicle is very different because you're not, there is no such thing really as idling. We call it, I call it an idle fee because idle is a great word for sitting around. But there's no idling in the sense that you have with a combustion engine where the vehicle is like quote unquote running. Um, like you can run the climate control system and everything independently from the motor that's powering the wheels to actually turn. So, um, as far as I'm aware, no, you can leave it on. But at the same time, if you're going to leave your vehicle, you're most likely going to turn it off anyway. Because you don't want to be wasting electricity. Oh, and, um, most of these systems, you can run the climate control completely independently. So if you want to like keep your vehicle cool or something like that, you can have your air conditioner running and the whole vehicle is not necessarily on.
Okay, great, thank you. Does anybody else have any other comments? Okay, thank you very much, Alex.
Sure, so I think in summary, trying to get a little more information for Roseanne on the idle feel, uh, idle fees. And Jason, I can certainly look at, um, like, okay, if we charged, you know, I can get, come up with a few different scenarios of if this is how much electricity we use that month, this is how much that additional, you know, say it is five cents, fee is going to get us. Or I could even say, okay, if we're going to, if we're just trying to break even, I could even say, well, at three cents, we would have to u- we would have to use X kilowatts per month to be able to break even at three cents. At two cents, we'd have to use X kilowatts per month to break even at two cents. I don't know if that would kind of help you visualize it a little bit more.
It would be helpful and I, I could, my brain wants to model it and see all these things. However, I, I realize that this is a lot of time that, that's a, over a matter of less than ten cents per kilowatt hour, so.
Sure.
Perhaps.
I, it, it's not, it's not hard to put the numbers together. I just caution that, um, it's, it's going to be numbers simply for numbers sake to see what that distribution looks like.
I love that.
Just because we don't know how it's actually getting, getting utilized. But certainly we can look at what that breakdown.
Yeah, some possibilities at the very least, something to kind of start with.
Absolutely, so I can, I can get that over to Sandy and Dan and for y'all to.
Do we have any idea how many people in town have electric vehicles?
It's funny, I think when we were going to install these, uh, a couple of years ago when we got the grant, the board asked the same question and I went to the assessor. And I, at the time, the answer was it's really hard to tell because a lot of the vehicle manufacturers are using like the same nomenclature, whether it's an electric vehicle or not. So it's hard to, I don't know if that has since changed though. So that'd be, I'd have to go to the, uh, refer to the assessor to kind of figure that out and whether they have those numbers. Cause I, I know I asked them that at the time and they were like, well, the, you know, the Chevy or the Ford, whatever model, they're using the same name, whether it's electric or not. So they couldn't like give me a good number on it, but maybe that, that maybe something's changed.
Might be helpful for us in determining the cost, whether it's worth the trouble to offer a discount to town residents. If we don't have that many people in town, then perhaps it's not worth our time to make a differentiation.
Yeah.
And, um, let's see, the thing I was going to ask, I, I think that's it. So thank you for trying to educate us.
Sure, yep, all right, thank you very much.
I wish I could say I felt a lot smarter, but I don't think I've earned an A yet.
Alex, what's a typical charge going to cost a normal car? Any, any brand, twenty-five bucks, fifty bucks?
We did the math last evening.
Yeah.
I know. Okay, good, thanks.
And the gas.
Kilowatts is like twenty-two bucks, yeah. Yeah, right now, gas is pretty low, so, um, a private charging station would probably not save any money, gas or electric. But if you're charging at your house, um, or if you're, or if we get a, a good rate at the chargers that we have, you'd still be saving money compared to gasoline. Gasoline's like less than two dollars right now, so.
Today?
Today, yeah, today. And in private chargers, they're up in maybe in the fifty cents range. So you're, you're not, you're not really paying more gas, you're not really paying less. But, um, that's kind of at the, gas is low and private charges are high, kind of perfect storm, if you will. In most scenarios up to today, you're, you're saving money compared to electricity.
Great, thank you. Oh, let's see. All right, next, under old business three B, appointment of ex officio board of selectmen member to the fair rent commission.
I would like to make a movement, uh, to appoint Jason Diebel as a ward of selectmen, ex officio member to the fair rent commission.
Second?
Any discussion?
Thank you for volunteering.
It'll be an honor.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And as is our custom, I will abstain.
Thank you. All right, next is the three C, appointment of alternate member to the fair rent commission. Yeah, I don't think we have anybody tonight for that. Um, and we did not receive any, um, resumes or letters showing, showing interest. So we will, uh, keep that out, um, and, um, keep advertising for, uh, somebody for the fair rent commission. Actually, for that, we need a landlord. It can be of any party.
Can you have Mrs. Johnson to swear in? She's all sworn?
Yeah, Nancy Johnson, yep, she's all sworn in, everybody else. Mike Beckett, um, he's away on vacation, but I, uh, he is going to be sworn in as soon as he comes back.
Good job.
Thanks. So he's all set. Under four, we have ex officio reports. Roseanne, do you want to start?
Sure. Um, Board of Ed has continued, uh, to, uh, their discussion of, um, the, um, artificial intelligence and how that's going to be implemented and introduced into the school system and at what levels. Uh, and I think that's going to, I, I don't see this, I, I, I see this being, um, under review and study, at least for the remainder of this year, before they can come up with some specific policies and how they want to begin the implementation. But they're planning to move ahead with that pretty rapidly.
And that, just a question, how are they going to use it? Like what, in the, in the classroom?
Well, I think some of it will be in the classroom, but also, uh, the, the teachers need in-service training. And, uh, one of the things is to consider is how do you identify whether the student's work is their own?
Versus artificial intelligence.
And so, uh, I would be surprised, uh, this is not going to be implemented all at once. They'll be doing this in small phases. Let me just say that I'm glad I'm retired because.
It's huge.
It, it is, I, it's a, a real, uh, it can, it will, it can have some positive effects, but it's, um, it's a lot to bring into the school system and a lot of education necessary for the teachers as to how to, how to implement this and use it wisely. And then also how to, how to track students' use of it in terms of they're doing their own work. Uh, so that has taken up quite a bit of time, um, and, um, they will meet again this coming Monday where I'm sure that they will further discussion. Uh, the Commission of Natural Resources had some discussion about the, uh, uh, the possibility of the purchase of the additional property at Hathaway Farms. And, uh, they would like to be, they would like to be consulted when it comes time for this to come onto our agenda so that they could have some input. Uh, and I would also suggest that we, when we're ready to have discussion of this, that we include the Aqua for Protection Commission uh, for their input as well. And that's all I have for this evening.
Jason, do you have anything?
Yes, uh, I attended the Stars to STEM meeting on, um, the eighth. And the big news there is they're launching, the first Friday of each month will be a, a show at the high school. And there's going to be a flyer going out at the, from the high school about it. Uh, I was fortunate enough to speak at the Nahantuck Heritage Day on the twelfth at, um, a Cooks Point Park or, um, what was once the Nahantuck Reservation. And that was well attended, beautiful day, they did a great job. Uh, Harbor Asset Management, Shellfish Commission, there is nothing wonderfully pressing or urgent happening, uh, just talking about shell fishing. Uh, I attended the Fair Rent Commission info session last night and, uh, though it was not sponsored by the town, um, I thought it would be a good move to go and check it out. It was hosted by two organizations, one is a five oh one C three called Connecticut Fair Housing Center. The other, um, is the largest nonprofit law firm in Connecticut called CT Legal Services. And though I'm not entirely familiar with either group and, and their affiliation or partisanship, it seemed, uh, like a very good presentation. I missed the first part of it, um, perhaps another member could speak to that. But the second half of it was very informative and I was very glad to have gone. And that's it.
Great. I, I just wanted to say too, I heard Jason do a speech at the Nahanduck Heritage Day and he did, he did a great job.
Oh, thank you.
Um, I don't have anything else to report, uh, Candace?
We had youth and family, they're working on a cannabis grant, that's about fifty-five thousand dollars. And that would be used, uh, for cannabis education, uh, if they are awarded it. They have multiple, uh, different programs that are running right now, which is great. Uh, ski club and some other things. The fair rent commission the other night was very well attended, I thought. Um, I thought that it was very good, you didn't miss much. Um, but I think that they're hitting the ground running and, uh, they were talking about possibly unionizing and some other options. So, um, I think that it was very well attended though, so that was very good.
Did, uh, but you were talking about the youth and family, the cannabis education? The cannabis education, do you have, is there a, like ages that that's going to be relevant for or provided to? Did they say anything?
They didn't really say anything about age group, but I would imagine that it would be, uh, utilized in many different facets as far as educating all on, uh, cannabis and the use of it and the, um, pros and cons of it, the health aspect of it and, um, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Don, do you have anything?
I attended the planning commission, uh, earlier this week and, uh, it was a fifteen minute meeting, really nothing going on there. And I have Wellsco tomorrow night.
Okay, great, thank you.
I have one other quickie and that is the Commission on Aging appointment. Uh, Commission on Aging will meet on Monday night, so I will personally call, uh, Ms. Coyle and ask her to come to town hall and get sworn in so that she can attend the meeting.
Oh, perfect. Okay, next is for selectmen's report. Um, I'm standing here for Dan, but I don't have anything to report on his behalf. Um, next is communication, so that kind of segues right into what Roseanne was saying. Um, we did receive a communication in your packet from Karen Gallo. And, um, basically it's talking about the, about meetings. And when a member resigns from a board, agency or committee, they must provide a letter resignation to the town clerk with an effective date of resignation stated in the letter. And when a new member is appointed to the board, agency or committee, the town clerk's office must be notified and that member cannot vote at any meeting until they've been sworn in. Also, if a meeting is scheduled by a board, agency or commission, commission, that meeting is, um, not on the scheduled meetings, um, if it's not on the scheduled meetings that were provided to the town clerk's office, then it's considered a special meeting. And no other business may be undertaken at that special meeting except what is stated on, on the agenda. And then any kind of minutes or agendas, uh, are filed are deemed filed as of the date they are received by the town clerk's office. And then if the town clerk is closed, they would not be officially filed until, uh, the town clerk's office is open. So that's kind of, um, I think she was sending this to us to just make sure that, um, we follow through with this and make sure the different committees that were ex officio for understand it and also follow that. So tha- that was it for, um, communications.
And could I add something?
Sure.
Maybe it's important to know that she also asked me to forward a copy of that memo. She drafted one to the new members of the fair rent commission. So this memo also went out to them in an email today by mail.
Oh, great, okay, excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there any public comment? Not seeing anybody. Um, there's no selectmen's response. So I guess, um, if there's nothing else, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting of the board of selectmen at seven forty-six P M.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries and we're adjourned.